Good evening, it's seven o'clock. Eastline Planning Commission want an order. We have one member unable to attend tonight, so we only see one alternate. Kevin Mills? You're next on the list. Does Kevin have a name tag? Or, I'm sorry?
Lee Edgeway.
Yeah, Edgeway, okay. No problem. Next is roll call from right to left, I guess. Stuff in there.
Cindy Collins?
Yeah.
Kevin Mills?
Kirk Scott.
Rich Gordon.
Tom Fiddy.
Brian Baumback.
Thank you. Time for the Pledge of Legions?
Legions to provide the United States of America to a republic which saves our nation under indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Next up, call for additions to the agenda. I believe we have one addition. And we can...
A B test community referral?
Right.
For a regulation change?
Mm-hmm. And we can put that under zoning. When we get to the zoning referrals section, we can go over it in more depth. We need a... Right. So we need a motion there, the application under zoning referrals for the text amendment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? No. Any abstentions? No. Thank you. So next, we have public delegations. Public delegation is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, issues or concerns related to approved subdivisions, and in-house proposals or general topics of discussion are open to comment. Agenda items, referrals, applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing or litigation may not be discussed. The members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comment during the delegations. We do have a public hearing, so we can discuss that matter when that comes up. Any... Next up is reports, communications. If we have any zoning representative? I think we had a couple zoning representatives last meeting.
Do you have some mail?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or petitions, that's for you.
Okay. Okay. Open now, or?
It could be an application. I haven't looked at it. I just got today.
Okay. It's a letter for Dan Conigan, I think. I don't know. Anything we have to look into? Couple check it, I guess.
Yeah, it's in regard to a technical report connected with wireless disstructure and 306 Flinder Road.
He's sending me a copy, I guess?
Yeah, it's just a copy.
Yeah.
So you can scan this and make a note. I'll read it.
Okay. Thank you. Zoning representative, I think a couple people. I apologize that you have to update our schedule for the liaison to the zoning meetings since we have a couple new people on the zoning board. I mean, I'm sorry, on the planning board. Tim, or?
Tim and I both.
Anyone? Kevin, if you have one, you can speak if you want.
Sure. I'll just go for it as I am. This is the July 10th regular meeting. A special permit passed six to zero for Taquarino Cinco in South South Plaza. This was a special permit needed for parking, which there was plenty of. Fifteen scatskill ring application for site plan application of three to six zero. This was for converting a deck to a three-seater room. They're looking to define short-term rent. The definition, they're looking to put a length in that definition. There was discussion about why the selectman, first selectman, has not signed the Fort Worth Housing Report. Two members were upset. They invited him to the next meeting. There was beginning talk about installing, entering in excellent watershed signs around town.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, ex officio Don McKenzie for the Board of Selectmen. You didn't have anything to add? You're fine?
Nothing, I haven't got anything to add.
Okay. Planning Director Gary Gaisel, do you have any updates?
None at this time.
You want to discuss Twin Valley subdivision?
Yeah, I give you an update on that.
Okay.
The progress there, as well as the farm metal subdivision. Yeah, I'll do you a chance.
Okay.
Don't do that now?
I guess so.
All right. So the subdivision on the Prevalley Lakes is coming along nicely. The binder course is down, all of the drainage is in, large detention basin. Here, the cul-de-sac there is constructed. They're currently working on the cul-de-sac closest to the lakes. We had the town engineer and I met with one of the budding neighbors, Mr. Kowski, that I've said about, and his wife to discuss street trees and trying to buffer the road a bit more from his property. Literally share the property line from town, whole of the town. So we decided to slide some of the trees closer together, the property line specifically, which thins them out by the detention basin. Where, but I think we drive through there reasonably well spaced. There's a couple that are, I thought, were planted too close together trying to create that stream. Oak trees would not, I think, be competing with each other. So there's a couple that I may recommend being spread out to really the tenants. Visual barrier, choose a different tree, but it is what it is. So the developer was willing to do, had the obligation to plant these trees. So it's, try to piece the neighbors. It's happy as possible.
Thank you.
Farm Meadow subdivision, which is off of Rosso Hill. Mr. Dino is moving along with that slowly. They've done some work to entrance, maintaining that as far as sweeping it. I've had to ask a few times, but they're responsive. Not sure when they're going to put the final course down. There's a couple of spots the town engineers identified that we are currently preparing before they put that course down. So I'd say that I anticipate sometime soon, I would imagine, you want to turn the road over to the town before the snow flies as well. I don't know, that's what I'm responsible for. The clock and maintenance are the primary, which is, the binder course has been exposed now. So here's, let's see, in there.
All right, thank you. Subcommittee updates? Do we have any chairperson report? I sort of welcome Nina Franco. She got sworn in yesterday as an alternate. Happy to have you. And as I mentioned, I guess we updated the liaison scheduled for the zoning meetings, the new members in attendance, and then the planning commission. Next up is approval of minutes, the meeting minutes of July 8th, 2025, regular meeting. I think there was one minor change. I guess I did the, any more nominations when Nina was being sworn in? I guess I did three times, I guess, technically.
I'm sorry, say it again.
When I did like no more nominations, I think I did three times.
Right.
Did it twice? It was twice on the minutes?
I don't, I'll look and see. I don't have a copy.
Yeah, not a major thing. I just, technically supposed to do it three times, so.
That was the original nomination, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a nomination just for Nina as alternate.
Sure. With the minutes here, so Collins, Nino, Nina Franco as the planning alternate, nominations were called for two more times. There were no other nominations.
So that's three?
So that's three total.
No big deal. Any other comments, or? Just need a motion to approve as amended, the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? As amended, I guess?
As amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any comments? I'm sorry?
I don't think that that causes an amendment, does it?
No.
That's not necessary.
There should be no...
This correction, okay. Okay, no.
Yeah, they're correct. Either way, you don't need to amend?
No, just...
I think it's just clarifying that there was...
Okay, just clarification, okay. No problem. Any other comments on the meeting? All in favor of approving the minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, against the motion to approve the minutes? No. Any abstentions? One abstentions? Oh, two abstentions. So it's for, for, two abstentions.
Tom.
They weren't at the meetings, so. Thank you. Next up is public hearings. We have Kristen Clark applicant for English Harbor Capital Partners. It's an application for a six lot conservation design district re-subdivision of 6.5 acres of land located at 237 Upper Up Patagansett Road. Their receipt was June 10th. The public hearing is starting today, and we need to close it by the September 16th. Garry, do you want to speak?
Just as a point of order, Mr. Chairman, we won't be able to close tonight because we're still waiting for some comments back from Ledge Light.
Okay.
We submitted the plans. They came back with some requested revisions that they're looking for.
Okay.
Our engineers addressing those, and hopefully we have those done by next week. And if I can, I want to provide Mr. Gaisel with the notices of mailing and two photographs of the sign being posted on the property. Good evening, lady and gentlemen. My name is Paul Garry. I represent English Harbor with regard to this six lot re-subdivision. As a point of order, if you're looking through some of the stuff you may already have, we had a slightly different caption on this when we submitted the application to the town. Staff asked us to change this so that it read six lot re-subdivision and previously said, I think, a five lot re-subdivision with a lot line revision. But it's essentially because we're redoing that lot that had, it was Lot 32, which is this originates from, it's considered a re-subdivision of the entire property. Just by way of background on this, because I think it's been happening on, this Lot 32, which we're seeking the subdivision on, came out of the entire parcel that was Upper Kensington Drive and was subdivided at that time. This open space is already dedicated, approximately 40 acres that's the rear of this property. So I just want that to be clear. We've talked with Mr. Gaisel, and as a result of that dedication of the open space from the original subdivision application, note for the open space is in fact required. We received comments from two staff members, one being the town engineer. Those notes that he asked to be addressed appear as Notes 7 and 9. They've been edited and revised to address his concern in that regard. They involve a maintenance plan that was provided by, the other issue we have is a maintenance plan for, and that was provided by my client, which is in the design report and is Exhibit H. It's identical to the plan, it's prepared and approved by Mr. Close for the Heritage Road subdivision, which my client is also involved in. With regard to his other comment regarding the post-construction drainage paths in drainage area B, the grading plans demonstrate that drainage is being directed away from the existing homes in the south, as current conditions are being provided for. One issue I should bring up, too, when you go through the plans that you receive tonight, those are essentially just the survey and demographic plans. The numbering on the page, they do not include the engineer's plans, except for some of the other information on those, because those are going to be revised once Ledge Light approves the septic designs for that, so they're not included in the plans that you receive tonight. With regard to the zoning enforcement officer, he submitted a comment. One of the issues was, you know, is there open space being provided? As I noted a moment ago, the open space has been previously provided, and it's that large area on the map that you see that's in open space, obviously, and which exceeds 30% of the original 79 acres. The details of the open space are Exhibit F in the design report. Mr. Mulholland also brought up an issue, because this is a CDC or CDB, that the perimeter setbacks be required because of the fact that in the lower right-hand corner of our property that fronts Upper Patagansett, that's the Basalia Fort Worth Housing subdivision, excuse me, CDB subdivision, your regulations do not require the 40-foot perimeter setback for properties that butt that in, doing the CDC. The other area that would require a 40-foot buffer is to the north. However, there is a road going through there, and roads essentially can act as a buffer under your regulations, plus the majority of that property or that boundary is against the open space land that is owned by the Eastline Land Trust. Just on the spot here, Lot 32.5 is the only one where, that's privately owned, but as I said, there's a road in between, on our property, between that and Lot 32.5. So the road functions as the buffer in that case. The existing southern boundary also has mature foliage on the property line, as evidenced by the property survey and the existing stone wall. As I indicated, Ledge Light Health District requested plan revisions. We're meeting with Ledge Light next week, hopefully, to go through that and address the issues they want it done, and also to get their confirmation on what we have done in terms of trying to address that. For the record, I just want to make sure that, since this was submitted a while back, that we're aware of everything that has been submitted. There's an original one copy of the application form, check for the application fee, 200660, 12 copies of 11 by 7 of the 10-page plan set, one original stamped and signed set of copies, excuse me, plan, and nine copies of 24 by 6 inches subdivision design report, 10 copies of the natural cultural resources map, 10 copies of the site plan context, a combined biological, environmental weapons impact study by Rima Ecological Services, the open space narrative, which is addressed in the design report, sewage disposal report is also addressed in the design report. The applicant has submitted an application to Ledge Light, as I mentioned, for subdivision review. Water supply report is addressed in the design report. Stormwater management, hydrological report, drainage calculations are submitted as a separate document from May engineering, and that document is dated May 12, 2025. Existing and proposed easements, which consist of a driveway, private driveway road maintenance agreement and draft tenants and comment deed to a private road, and driveway access agreement with the abutting property owner are also included as exhibits in the design report. And a conventional subdivision plan for the property was submitted with the original application as required. So I don't have a lot to add to that at this point in time, since I believe we've addressed the staff comments from Mr. Mulholland and Mr. Close. I had a meeting with Mr. Gaisel last week, and I think we addressed any concerns that he had with regard to that. So unless the commission has some other questions, I think that really kind of covers where we'd be at tonight, where I, what I would represent tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to note that the public notice was published on August 1st, in August 8th, 2025, additions date paper. Thread is followed. This is my planning report, public hearing July 12, 2025, at 17:00, at Eastside Avenue in Connecticut. And I consider the following. Application of Kristen Clark, BD applicant, English Harbor Capital Partners LLC owner, for a six lot conservation design district re-subdivision of approximately 6.5 acre plan, zone RU40 on property located at 237 Upper Patagansett Road, Eastline, Connecticut, accessory map number 39.0, lot number 10-2. Application was available for review at Eastline Land Use Office. Attorney, I want to do all of those exhibit items. We do have exhibits 1 through Slide 17. Some of the design reports that he referenced are in one exhibit tonight. So I can read to those if you'd like. As I see indicated, he had addressed the majority of the staff concerns. I think we are really awaiting a review from a final review of Ledge Light and favorable in terms of approving each lot. Is this being suitable for subsubdivision? Any impressions?
So you have any concerns with the buffer? I guess the open space would cover part of...
We did discuss the buffer issue as attorney pointed out. We got to the south is an existing conservation design development, so we already have reduced setbacks there.
Hmm.
To the north is existing open space, which was the open space that was dedicated as part of the Nottinghamville subdivision. That was not shared with the phase, but nevertheless, so that area, who would they open? So as far as needing an additional buffer, I mean, they divided, I believe the setbacks are shown on the plan. I think they're providing it.
Correct. So in the yard setbacks themselves, particularly the, let me go to this one here.
This area right here is all protected on that, and that's the only private lot.
Hmm.
This is the open space that the land trust owns. And actually, this lot here was purchased by Mrs. Stevens from my client, and that's what ended up doing, this is why I said the re-subdivision, that was basically a lot that we were putting up on this 10 years ago. So this is your buffer for your north portion of that, that's the abutting property. So that's, that's a supply here, you see the setback here is part of it. My first was, by that condition.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Just one. So on that first slide, or first page here, there's a little note on the diagram that says subject property on the very front page of your, on the very front page of that whole thing. If you look real close, up in the, up towards the, it says subject property on the map itself, and it points to something on Upper Kensington.
Yeah, that is just not as accurate as it should be. It should be pointing directly to the area that's involved there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Okay. So I think, so we meet with Ledge Light next week, then we should be ready to conclude the public hearing at your next regular schedule.
Right, we can do that, yeah.
I don't know if you want something in writing for me to consenting to the extension, or I'm asking, so just trying to remember exactly what term. We would have 35 days. You get 35 days, right. So we're not extending it that way. That's good. It should be 30 days to the next meeting.
Yeah, the meetings before the, closed by September 16th, the meetings prior to that.
We'll have to close it for, you know, or if we're delaying, then we may need an extension for it. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have any comments or want to speak? Sure.
Should I go over there?
Sure. Just your name and address.
Let me make mine a little closer, I guess. That should be good.
Okay. Patricia Whitaker, 190, Upper Patagansett. First of all, I was disappointed in how small your notice was for this meeting tonight. It was this big in the paper. A friend of mine saw it, so I came. What, I've lived at my address for 40 years. I have taught in the schools for 45 years in Eastline, so I've been here a while. I think we should all be grateful that nobody's been killed on that, on Upper Patagansett, because it's dangerous. There's no shoulders, no sidewalks until you get to the end. The track team uses it to run. You can't ride a bike on it and be safe. People speed. People drive way too fast on it. When Kensington was going up, there were trucks, huge trucks, coming and going, bigger than you couldn't pass them, because the road isn't wide enough for these enormous trucks. So I'm disappointed to hear that we might be putting more houses up, which makes me think, why do we need more houses in Eastlime? How about some open space? How about some trusts like Old Lime does? And why do we keep building and building? I think we should have a referendum where people get to voice what they think about the accelerated pace of building in town. It's just, that road is, I worry that something might happen on the road. It's windy, it's narrow. There's no way for a runner to get off it. They run, people run on it, but, so more houses, I don't agree with. Kensington has quite a few houses up there. This is going to connect, I think? I'm not sure. I don't have all the information. But that's my opinion. I've been here 40 years, paying taxes, seeing what's going on, and I think we need to think as a town. Maybe, there's the Bridebrook going up, that thing in Bridebrook, North Bridebrook, the enormous amount of apartments. I don't know, do we need it? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did anybody else wish to speak, or want to speak? Sure.
Should I go over there?
Sure. Just your name and address.
Let me carry.
If you make mine a little closer, I guess. That should be good.
Okay. Patricia Whitaker, 190, Upper Patagansett. First of all, I was disappointed in how small your notice was for this meeting tonight. It was this big in the paper. A friend of mine saw it, so I came. What, I've lived at my address for 40 years. I have taught in the schools for 45 years in Eastline, so I've been here a while. I think we should all be grateful that nobody's been killed on that, on Upper Patagansett, because it's dangerous. There's no shoulders, no sidewalks until you get to the end. The track team uses it to run. You can't ride a bike on it and be safe. People speed. People drive way too fast on it. When Kensington was going up, there were trucks, huge trucks, coming and going, bigger than you couldn't pass them, because the road isn't wide enough for these enormous trucks. So I'm disappointed to hear that we might be putting more houses up, which makes me think, why do we need more houses in Eastlime? How about some open space? How about some trusts like Old Lime does? And why do we keep building and building? I think we should have a referendum where people get to voice what they think about the accelerated pace of building in town. It's just, that road is, I worry that something might happen on the road. It's windy, it's narrow. There's no way for a runner to get off it. They run, people run on it, but, so more houses, I don't agree with. Kensington has quite a few houses up there. This is going to connect, I think? I'm not sure. I don't have all the information. But that's my opinion. I've been here 40 years, paying taxes, seeing what's going on, and I think we need to think as a town. Maybe, there's the Bridebrook going up, that thing in Bridebrook, North Bridebrook, the enormous amount of apartments. I don't know, do we need it? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did anybody else wish to speak, or? Nobody else wishes to speak? Yes, we can take a motion to continue the public hearing, since we still need response from Ledge Light. I can take a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of continuing the public hearing until September?
Aye.
All opposed to continuing the public hearing? Any abstentions? So we have a motion to continue the public hearing until September. Thank you. Next up, we have a subdivision application that just came in on August 5th. It's at 49 Brainerd Road, the Roderick M. Cornish Revocable Trust, applicant and owner. It's an application for a two-lot subdivision of approximately 52.79 acres of land located on 49 Brainerd Road, zone RU40-20. Gary, do you want to speak on that?
I have copies of the proposed plan, if you have. Then the applicant was unable to be here this evening. State, they have a discussion.
Mr. Close, I had a meeting with Mr. DeShul last week and I think we addressed any concerns that he had with regard to that. So unless the commission has some other questions, I think it really kind of covers where we'd be at tonight. Where I, what I would represent tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to note that the public notice was published on August 1st, in August 8th, 2025, additions to the day paper. Thread is follows. East Line Atlantic Committee Public hearing July 12th, 2025, at 7:00 AM, at East Line 11th Avenue, Manhattan. And Connecticut considers the following application of Christian Card BD applicant English Harbor Capital Partners LLC owner for a six lot conservation design district, three subdivision of approximately 6.5 acre plan zone RU40 on property located at 237 Upper Patagansett, East Line, Connecticut. Accessory map number 39.0, lot number 10-2. Application was double reviewed at East Line Land Use Office. Attorney Attorney, when you do all of those exhibit items, we do have exhibits one through like 17. Some of the design reports that he referenced are in one exhibit tonight. So I can read to those if you'd like. As I see indicated, he had addressed the majority of staff concerns. I think we are really awaiting a review from a final review of ledge light and favorable in terms of approving each lot. It's being suitable for subsequent steps. Any other questions?
So you have any concerns with the buffer? I guess the open space would cover part of...
We did discuss the buffer issue as Attorney pointed out. We got to the south is an existing conservation design development, so we already have reduced setbacks there.
Hmm.
To the north is existing open space, which was the open space that was dedicated as part of the Nottinghamville subdivision. That was not shared in the phase, but nevertheless, so that area, who would they open? So as far as needing additional buffer, I mean, they divided, I believe the setbacks are shown on the plan. I think they're providing it.
Correct. So in the yard setbacks themselves, particularly the...
Let me go to this one right here. This area right here is all protected on that, and that's the only private lot. This is the open space that the land was on. And actually, this lot here was purchased by Mrs. Stevens from my client, and that's what ended up doing it. This is why I said the re-sublety, that was basically a lot that I was putting up on this about 10 years ago. So this is your buffer for your portion of that, that's not funding top of interest. So that's a supply here, you can look the setback here as well. My first is, by that condition.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Just one. So on that first slide, first page here, there's a little note on the diagram that says subject property on the very front page of your, on the very front page of that whole thing.
First page.
If you look real close up in the, up towards the, it says subject property on the map itself, and it points to something on Upper Kensington.
Yeah, that is just not as accurate as it should be. It should be pointing directly to the area that's involved there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Okay. So I think if we meet with ledge light next week, then we should be ready to conclude the public hearing at your next regular schedule.
Right, we can do that, yeah.
I don't know if you want something in writing for me to consenting to the extension, or I'm asking, so just trying to remember exactly what term.
We would have 35 days.
You get 35 days, right. So we're not extending it that way. That's good.
It should be 30 days to the next meeting.
Yeah, the meetings before the, close by September 16th, the meetings prior to that.
Well, not be closer for, you know, or if we're delaying, then we may need an extension for you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have any comments or want to speak? Sure.
Should I go over there?
Sure. Just your name and address.
Can you hear me?
If you make mine a little closer, I guess. That should be good.
Okay. Patricia Whitaker, 190 Upper Patagansett. First of all, I was disappointed on how small your notice was for this meeting tonight. It was this big in the paper. A friend of mine saw it, so I came. I've lived at my address for 40 years. I have taught in the schools for 45 years in East Line, so I've been here a while. I think we should all be grateful that nobody's been killed on that, on Upper Patagansett because it's dangerous. There's no shoulders, no sidewalks till you get to the end. The track team uses it to run. You can't ride a bike on it and be safe. People speed. People drive way too fast on it. When Kensington was going up, there were trucks, huge trucks, coming and going, bigger than you couldn't pass them, because the road isn't wide enough for these enormous trucks. So I'm disappointed to hear that we might be putting more houses up, which makes me think, why do we need more houses in East Line? How about some open space? How about some truss like Old Lime does? And why do we keep building and building? I think we should have a referendum where people get to voice what they think about the accelerated pace of building in town. It's just, that road is, I worry that something might happen on the road. It's windy, it's narrow, there's no way for a runner to get off. They run, people run on it, but, so more houses, I don't agree with. Kensington has quite a few houses up there. This is gonna connect, I think? I'm not sure. I don't have all the information, but that's my opinion. I've been here 40 years, paying taxes, seeing what's going on, and I think we need to think as a town. Maybe, there's the Bridebrook going up, that thing in Bridebrook, North Bridebrook, the enormous amount of apartments. I don't know, do we need it? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did anybody else wish to speak, or? Nobody else wishes to speak, I guess we can take a motion to continue the public hearing since we still need response from ledge light. I can take a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of continuing the public hearing until September?
Aye.
All opposed to continuing the public hearing? Any abstentions? So we have a motion to continue the public hearing until September. Thank you.
Next up, we have a subdivision application that just came in on August 5th. It's at 49 Brainerd Road, the Roderick M. Cornish Revocable Trust, applicant and owner. It's an application for two lot subdivision of approximately 52.79 acres of land located on 49 Brainerd Road, zone RU40-20. Gary, did you want to speak on that?
I have copies of the proposed plan to give. Then the applicant was unable to be here this evening. State approved it after table discussion against the...
Yes, sir.
So in light of that, I was just wanting to recognize the seat of the application. It is a, that stands as a subdivision of land. Don't believe it's a resub, but I was talking earlier with staff, and as you can see, they indicated that it looks like there's a waiver that's necessary. So I try to see if the applicant can request those waivers, any request waivers, then this will be public hearing, which I'm going to find that out.
Okay. And I guess we're also waiting for a review by in Wetlands?
Yes, that, we're also waiting on that. They received it at their last meeting. They have to wait minimum of 15 days to, member of the decision asks to add that to the agenda, so they will take that as a request.
Okay. Shall we just probably determine whether a public hearing is needed, I guess, based on the waiver request, I guess?
As proposed, I would say that the public hearing is not required, as I spoke with John Valmarie, their applicant representative, I think I said, after talking with staff, it looked like they might need to request a waiver, so if that's the case, then modify what they have.
Okay.
But possibly not, so.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have any questions or comments? I guess I can take a motion to acknowledge receipt and then to table the, table the discussion, right? And we can then continue the application at the next meeting. Can I have a motion, I guess, for that?
Motion to adjourn the discussion.
Okay. And acknowledge receipt of the application. And continue the application.
Knowledge.
Receipt, I guess?
Yeah, I think that's due.
That's fine. I think that's given.
We know on the agenda that they have received it by 2025.
Okay.
It should be due.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussions? All in favor of tabling the application? Say it. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against? Nope. Any abstentions? Nope. So it was a vote of six to nothing to table the discussion until the next meeting. Thank you. Next up is zoning referrals, added to the agenda. It's an application of William R. Sweeney, Esquire, agent for 296 Flanders, for a text amendment to the town of East Line Gateway Commons Master Development. Plan to specifically permit by site plan approval light industrial manufacturing uses, warehouses and land wholesale storage uses, and screened outdoor storage of box trailers. The text amendment would be in section 11, 8.9 of the East Line zoning regulations. I know that the public hearing is scheduled on this text amendment, so it's September 4th, so that would be before our next meeting.
Yes, that's correct. So my initial review of this is the Gateway Plan Development District has a master development plan already. After discussing the proposal with Mr. Mulholland, my understanding is that this proposes to amend not necessarily the zoning regulations itself, but the master development plan, which is, the zoning regulations basically effectually cause that to come into play. In either case, at my discussion with them, I said, well, the master gateway, the plan development, we had a concept and a vision for what that was going to be and look like, and that's what we approved. So why would we want to change that? That's the direction we're going. This is a more industrialized use, while that industrialized use might be, you know, to fit, doesn't mean that the town is wanted there, thus we adopted the type of development district. So my thought is that this would be inconsistent with keeping with that district, the district itself, because set more specific criteria and regulation to develop for that. So my thought is that these changes are inconsistent with the master development plan, intent of that plan, as well as the GPD, which is gateway development district. So just, that's confusing a little bit because they're not specifically changing the regulation, they're looking to amend the master development plan for the district. In either case, whether we amend that plan going away, I would think both of them exist. With warehouses, we're looking for tractor trailers, parking spaces specifically. We do have cyclones that were submitted to the Department Agency, and that cyclone was approved by them, which entertained 30 tractor trailer loading docks, and 27 tractor trailer parking spaces, in addition to 300 plus or minus vehicular parking spaces.
What zone is this right now?
This was its zone, Gateway Plan Development District. So if we turn the zoning map, I pull it up here, we need to red. So you'll see this GPDD, this green area here, that's also covered by this hatched red area, which is the upper protection area, that's an overlay zone, it's well, has specific criteria for it. This circle, right in the middle is the current DUC Costco site development, and the gas station is literally just on the west of this upper protection area now. So if you want to take yourself there. So they're looking at the site plan that was approved by the Department Agency, was the property behind base value.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was in that area. So this amendment would, I presume, allow them to make application for the site plan that was entertained by the weapons because of face value. Mr. Mulholland's review of that plan indicated that the proposed use was not permissible. Specifically, the outside storage of tractor trailer parking spaces.
But that is commercial, right? It's commercial industrial.
It's zone Gateway Plan Development District, not industrial, it used to be zone industrial.
Oh, that's what I thought it was.
The town, the zoning commission adopted the zone and regulations, so it's its own zone.
It changed it a little bit, okay.
So the Gateway Plan Development District, it is a commercialized zone, allows for retail, I guess, I can pull up the regs and go through this specifically.
It's not industrial, not interesting. That was thought to be.
Sure. So this development plan, this gateway development plan that they want to amend, when was that freezing? Is that under the zoning commission's purview, or was that by the planning commission?
That plan was approved by the zoning commission as part of the Gateway Plan Development District regulations.
Okay, so that's what they're amending, was their plan, based on the zoning rules?
Correct.
Understood. So our purview here really is to say whether that change, would it be affected to the POCD, or how the POCD?
Right, would it be consistent or inconsistent with it?
So really, looking up their zoning regulations, I mean, we're not gonna say whether or not it's consistent with their zoning regulations, we're gonna say whether or not it's consistent with our POCD.
Correct.
Just for clarity.
Hmm.
So, let me, sorry. Is that today? Right, it was March 6th, 2008, the Gateway Plan Development District intended to be master development plan was adopted, section 11, 1A, 9.1. It has undergone some subsequent modifications since then. It was 2015, there was an amendment to the zone, section 11, A, 9.1, 12, 12C. That was in, I believe, that was in October, 2015.
Do we see a version of proposed new, the new version of their zoning, the document that they're looking at?
I think they wanted to add these three uses to their permitted uses.
So, master development plan, you have permitted uses up there. Those are the current uses. Anister, and parking garage, corporate headquarters, research design facilities, hotels, daycare centers, health club, personal services, business professional metaphors, standard investor restaurants, without property facilities, multifamily, townhouses, retail stores. Again, subject to restrictions of 11A, 9. What the applicant here is looking to add is the, these three uses here, light industrial manufacturing uses, warehouse and wholesale storage, screened outdoor storage of box
So I'm trying to figure out where in the POCD we can refer to if we say it's inconsistent with the, maybe inconsistent with their master development plan, but as Kirk mentioned, it wasn't as their zoning regulation, zoning plan.
Right. I'll give you a second, I'll think about that.
Sure.
So I believe we did have a bunch of recommendations in the POCD to try to encourage industrial, I don't know off the top of my head exactly where, but I know, I know we did try to encourage industrial.
Chapter, chapter eight, I guess.
what the zone is and the purposes of zoning. And then, it's the...
This is industrial here.
On the, in my, in my recommendations.
Yeah. Take that.
We have a matrix, Paul, but...
Yeah, we, I thought we did, yeah.
So I would say section 8 on residential development, and section 9 here on residential. Might be applicable if they do allow for mixed use within the Gateway Plan Development District, which is a residential one. So here are the recommendations for commercial, future commercial development in existing commercial zone areas. Support efficient use of commercial space by updating zoning regulations to allow for remote community housing.
Let's see. Said consider amending allowed uses or uses by special permit in residential zones adjacent to CA and CB zones. We had some discussion here, there was a question, should East Line move this, the proposed public safety building at the Honeywell property? I think that was a question. Not sure why that ended up being highlighted, but I would note that we established a police station at that location. Support agriculture as a commercial business through the expansion of allowable uses, as not spill mitigation measures. Consider a rezone of the current Flanders Commercial District on Boston Post Road from Chesterfield Road to the west as CB, or given a new designation such as Flanders Village Recommend adopting controls over the number and location of curb cuts within the CA zone, And that ends the section, so there's nothing specific on commercial as it relates to the Gateway Plan Development District, other than to continue to encourage probably the uses that are already identified as being permissible. Sort of these other areas of town that, unfortunately, they're not the Plan Development District. Although in Flanders, the Commercial District does abut portions of it.
Is that an issue that they had before also, that's a consideration?
As it pertains to different uses there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the zoning commission also acts as, is the upper protection agency. When reviewing applications, they have to review it under that criteria as well.
Gary, can you speak to whether they revisit this, zoning revisits this master plan periodically? Does 2018 apply to that?
No, I don't think it's something that they go back to revisit.
Maybe they should, similar to how we do here for the, 2018 is a long time ago, maybe some input.
Yeah.
For the town.
I think that would be a good, good recommendation to pass on. So we can comment that, we can comment on whether they should revisit the master, even though it's not really... You can provide, you know, whatever comment you'd like. At the end of the day, what they need to know is whether or not it's consistent or inconsistent with the POCD. Typically, we make that motion, and then if you want to add any comments, you can, you can add them after, you know. I don't know if anyone has any further questions for me? Yeah, it seems like it's marginally inconsistent, but it's hard to pinpoint a recommendation. I mean, I think, you know, I guess if we're looking at the POCD and how the town is zoned, you know, I would think that, you know, the Gateway Plan Development District is within, you know, in terms of it's adjacent to existing commercial area, it's part of that commercial node within the center of town there. So, you know, it has a residential component, that being said, that residential component was built horizontally and not vertically, so it is a bit of a sprawled development in that regard, and the bulk of that district is taken up by those multifamily homes. If you, you know, the area mainly adjacent to 95, with the exception of Costco, so the other area that's left is relatively small in comparison. So, but again, we, we are still encouraging commercial development there. We're not saying no to that. We still want retail development that was initially contemplated. You know, obviously, it's, whether we'll get that or not, I don't know. It doesn't look like that's what the landowners want to construct, so.
Is that an issue over there? Do you have the highway noise?
I would say you have the highway noise. I would say you have the highway noise, you know, the on-ramps, it, the, the whole area is built up commercially, so it's probably more of a non-issue.
If you read the description of the gateway plan development district in chapter eight, you know, the, the addition of what they're requesting does not fit into that original, uh.
Excellent, small business.
You know, the purpose of developing that, it certainly didn't intend for, you know, warehouses and storage facilities and box trailers piled up in that area, that's not what that was developed to be. It says it's supposed to be, you know, promote high-tech businesses, highly skilled workers, protect against maximum build-out. Supposed to be a place where, you know, maybe a high-tech company might come in or something like that, a business development, not, sounds like this would allow them to, you know, put a bunch of ugly warehouses and storage container facility there, who knows what else, trucks. Doesn't seem like it meets the purpose of this gateway plan development district.
I would say, the only, the only thing I would say in terms of the application is it is focusing on keeping this commercial industrial use within an existing commercial industrial type zone, uh, being, rather than that they're not proposing to rezone, you know, fifty acres, you know, to light industrial, so, um, at least it, you know, from that perspective, it's, it's ideal, because it, that would be more consistent with our P O C D and the recommendation here to limit future commercial development to existing commercially zoned areas. Um, but, uh. Deanna, I mean, I, like I said, I, I don't see it necessarily consistent with the, the zone or what was originally approved, but as Kirk pointed out, we're really looking for consistency with the plan of development. And I think the plan of development is a little silent on the gateway plan development district, other than, and if we only look to the commercial section here and the residential, um, I, I, I think, you know, that's why I'd have to go back and try to glean from the zoning regulations, what was the intent of the district. And obviously, if, I mean, I shouldn't say obviously, I, I don't know for certain, but I suspect that the planning commission found the adoption of the gateway master development plan in the district consistent with the P O C D. It's possible that they didn't, but I, I, I would have to double check on what that vote was.
I don't remember specifically discussed, but.
Well, two thousand eight was March of two thousand.
Oh, two thousand eight, I'm sorry.
It was before my time.
Two thousand ten P O C D, okay.
I don't recall, I, I just recall the, the change in twenty fifteen and it wasn't a significant.
Right.
Undertake that change there, and I think we found that change consistent.
Well, since we have to make a comment, since their public hearing is in September, I guess we should make some sort of motion at this point, if you wanna, if you wanna achieve some sort of input, I get, can we say something like it's not, there's nothing specifically, you know, anything specific in the recommendations that would lead it to be consistent or inconsistent, and I don't know if it's.
Uh, I, I would try to be as clear and definitive as possible.
Right.
Um, I mean, we can certainly have a special meeting if you want, I don't know that you need one, but, uh.
We don't need a special meeting, this is not really our, being the final determination, we're just advising, so.
Well, a, a, as you know, the, the, if this commission found the proposal to be inconsistent, then the zoning commission would need a two-thirds vote.
Right.
They need anyway.
Right.
To pass any. But, uh, you know, I do, I do believe that they are interested in the, the vote of this commission.
Mm-hmm.
Whether, you know, and whether they find it consistent or inconsistent, as well as, as the, in favor and opposed. I, I do believe they, they follow that as well. You know, in terms of economic development, I would think that it would allow for more uses within an existing zone, so it would be more consistent. Um, so, I, I, you know, when you're looking at consistency with the P O C D, I think the proposal actually ends up being consistent, whereas if you look at whether it's consistent with the zone.
Right.
It, it may be, those uses may be more intense than what was initially contemplated and desired.
Right, but they're not, I guess we can come, but we're not, they're not really looking for whether we think it's consistent with their regulations, whether we can feel it's consistent with the P O C D, so.
Right, two different.
Right.
So are, I hear concerns in the way this is what, um, the noise and, and so, that's a problem, are there stipulations we can ask for to make it look better, to make it look more hard like that? Because I, I see this as consistent, we have in our P O C Ds that as residential, both opinions, we should promote industrial uses for that account to prevent further driving tax costs. So it's almost directly, um, P O C D, it's aligned in P O C D in that way?
Yeah, I would not disagree, uh, but in terms of can it be buffered, so I, I would just point to eleven A nine point one, where they use, uh, things like, you know, superior design through flexible and context-sensitive development standards. Uh, so they want to reduce impacts associated with large-scale development and provide protection to adjoining neighborhoods. Um, so they go through the, the uses, submission requirements, but I believe approval criteria they have here, um. Okay, even if I forgot this went on. Yeah, so I think this just refers back to, you're architectural standards for the proposed development, so there's a number of, of those, as well as here, these bulk dimensional requirements, parking loading, landscaping and screening, lighting, signage, open space and conservation areas, and then any other standards the zoning commission may require. That's pretty broad. So I think the answer to your question is yes, they have that, that leverage to buffer use.
If we add that, Jim, as a recommendation?
I would, yeah, definitely, I mean, if, if you're wanting to recommend that they, you know, you can just note that you have the ability to provide the screening and buffer to the extent that you see fit, you know, type of a thing, using their discretion.
Kind of, kind of to support that, uh, section nine point one, the first thing it says, should encourage attractive, well-designed commercial and industrial activity in appropriate So that kind of hits both of those, encouraging, encouraging industrial development and making it attractive and in, in appropriate locations.
Yeah, as far as the location, whether it's appropriate, it certainly lends itself being in proximity to the highway. So if you were to have tractor trailers there, at least they wouldn't be necessarily trucking through, uh, town, uh, but again, I don't want to, you know, uh, could they, they'll still use Route One and, and one sixty-one and one fifty-six, I would think, um, I want to go to eliminate truck traffic, it might reduce it, but I wouldn't think it'd eliminate So any further thoughts, or?
Sounds like it's consistent with the P O C D, but there's some.
We can, we can say it's consistent, but then put a caveat or in a motion, I guess.
I don't, I don't agree with that, but I can't see how adding this in, revising this gateway description with adding in this is consistent with the P O C D. I don't agree with.
I think where we can say, say it's inconsistent at all, we can refer to.
So, if, if we're saying it's inconsistent, we would have to cite a particular part in the P O C D, I would think.
Correct. You have to go on record with how it's inconsistent. Whereas if you found it consistent, you don't have to specify which section it's consistent with, however, I think it's, it's good practice to.
So that, that area is a industrial area as it is now, or, or mixed industrial and residential?
I would say it's a mixed-use, re, Costco is considered a retail store.
So it's not industrial at all?
Uh, and it's not considered a warehouse, it's considered a retail store, the primary thing they do there is sell goods. You go in, you typically buy something and you walk out, so it's a re.
Are those apartments, new apartments, supposed to be freeway?
Those are apartments in the gateway that are up on the hill from behind, those, those apartments are part of that district. Um, I think the, the development district had recommended and I think required initially a more, a larger variety of housing versus just apartments. We've had, I think the initial concepts had two families, three families, and, uh, up to four-family housing, as well as apartment buildings, so, um, it, it, I think there were even some single-family units in there to provide a, a large variety, but instead the housing is all in apartments and, and vertical, so. I should say vertical, it's also pros and cons, spread out across the site.
Any more discussion or questions, or? I guess we'd have to entertain a motion that would maybe address our concerns and maybe, you know, no, that it's consistent with business, industrial provisions in chapters eight and nine, or something along those lines.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I guess we have, we can entertain a motion that it's, while it's consistent with chapters eight and nine, with industrial and economic development, um, we should probably address some of our concerns in the, uh, motion, I guess.
Well, I, I'd agree with that, but it's just not in that spot. That's what not this gateway, it's designed to develop businesses and stores and things that the surrounding community can utilize, not dump in this industrial warehouses and storage in the area, and trucks right in the middle, it does not seem like the right thing to do.
Yeah, I don't, I think, my understanding is that, that in the past, there had been some applications or attempts for a truck terminal, a gas facility, or the truck wash and all of that, none of that ever came to fruition, my understanding is the community was adamantly opposed. Um, that being said, uh, this is a slightly different use that we've seen, you know, kind of come forward in terms of what was proposed to, to the wetland commission, um, you know, again, we don't know what the site plan will ultimately look like until it gets in front of zoning. Um, that said, I, I would definitely agree with Brian, though, the intent of the zone was never for, I mean, a heavy industrial zone. Uh, we, otherwise we would have left it as a lie, which would, or, you know, light industrial, so, um, you know, it, the question here is it promoting, you know, compatible economic development with adjoining uses, and, you know, there's concerns obviously in preserving the, quote, New England aesthetic that we so highly desire. Um, I, I think there are controls in place that can be had. Um, that being said, if you look at the Costco building, it's a pretty basic building, not aesthetically, so I, I think the recommendation here would be any future development build-out, um, they'd have to keep in mind the aesthetics, uh, if they want something, you know, otherwise you're going to end up with just more square rectangles on the land, and it's going to be very institutionalized in terms of looking, you know, more business park-like than maybe I do think retail will have some difficulties though, considering the current economy and with, with, you know, online sales and the, the challenges there that come with it, uh, if you look at, you know, the Crystal Mall is a good example of retail just drying up, um, because sales are now easier to be had online, so, um, something to think about.
Did anybody else have any suggestions?
The Crystal Mall came out okay, right, they're developing it into business and.
Yeah, the Electric Boat, General Dynamics has picked up the building.
They're not dumping in, uh, storage container facility and stuff in there, right? They, they did what kind of what we want to do, I mean, well, you know.
Well, they, they were able to find a, a tenant, um, I mean, that had the wherewithal probably to acquire the property, one, considering the cost, I don't, I don't know what the value of it is now, I'm sure it's depreciated quite a bit, um, you know, it's, it's in a bit of, at least the exterior looks like it's in a bit of disrepair. Uh, the interior of that building is, looks like it's in pretty good shape, so, I mean, I don't, you know, they're lucky, I think, to get the tenant, but you do see all that retail, there's very little left walking through there.
One question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I heard what you said, but it didn't really register. When you were saying what type of zone this is currently, like, I know we have the overlay for the development zone, but the underlying one, what, what, what is the, the type of use meant to be for both of them?
Gateway Plan Development District?
Yeah, it's like, uh, residential and retail. So.
So here I, I brought up in the, in the zoning code is that, with, they identify as the purpose of this district, to coordinate development of properties under separate ownership and provide safeguards that one or another, early development does not jeopardize maximum build-out, didn't you just, something like that? Promote high-technology businesses and complementary uses that will broaden the town's tax base, provide employment for highly skilled workers, and be in harmony with the underlying O�ra Protection District, so, yeah, I, I mean, and here, here are those permitted uses. I think I read those earlier. Research, design, health club.
Nothing touches on there what they're proposing to do.
Correct.
They got some property they can't do anything with right now, so they want to do something else for it.
Special uses, light manufacturing facilities, hotel, parking garage, retail complex, twenty thousand square feet and over, residential mixed use, uh, is a special use, so, the, those specific uses that they want to do, as Brian pointed out, yeah, are not, aren't listed there.
Okay, so there's, there's, there's some references here to support against, so I found another reference here, it says to limit future commercial development, which is what it sounds like this trucking and warehousing is like a commercial development. A recommendation of eight point two said, limit to this, uh, commercial development to existing commercially zoned areas. So if you were looking for some, like, references to say why you don't want it. So if you were looking for some like references to say why you don't want it, potentially that's one.
Is that it's not zoned?
And also, and also what we just saw here in that definition of what that zone is supposed to be. So there's two different references. So what section is that you just read?
That's nine point one philosophy and policies.
Pro, 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 policy.
I talked about industrial to the public locations, meaning services for residents.
Do we want to take a stab at making a summary? I mean, cause I'm hearing, I'm hearing both about.
Right.
Consistent with chapters eight and nine.
Right.
But also inconsistent with the general theme of preserving community character.
Right.
And, and that other section in eight point one that I read. Section eight point two and nine point one would, would lead against, would make it so that you're against, or that would support being against, um, the P O C D.
We also have the highly skilled.
Which section has this here? Eight point?
Eight one, eight point one.
Eight point one.
It would.
Provide employment for highly skilled workers on the, on the.
So that's. Yeah, that's good. That's against. That would, that would be, because these jobs that they're talking about are not necessarily highly skilled. Yes, they are skilled, but.
It's not.
Not a technological.
They also then passed one sixty one. How are they going to pass, um, one? I mean, how much?
He's have.
Return.
That's the ninety five.
Yeah, if they're, yeah, cutting what their roots are.
So it sounds like you have a option to go either way with this.
Eight one, eight one five and nine point one.
I think we, in the past, have done a consistent and inconsistent.
Right, we've done that in the past. Say it's con- consistent with the overall economic and industrialist, but it's consistent with those two citations that we noted, I guess.
Uh, it, it, you can, you.
Say it's both consistent and inconsistent.
You, you could make a motion, but that's just confusing. And then the commission doesn't have any.
I'd say you could say.
I, I would just pick one, go with it, right?
I don't see how you could say it's consistent for that application. It's consistent with the properly zoned application, right?
Right. If you're finding it inconsistent with the P O C D based on what the description that Kirk just read, I would say that it's, it's inconsistent with the existing zone, cause it's not permitted.
Right, but.
Plain and simple.
But, but, but our job is to say if it's consistent for the zone, our job is to say if it's consistent with the P O C D.
Right. So if I, if you're saying it's inconsistent with the P O C D, it's because it's not, it's not being proposed in a light industrial zone?
No, I get it. All right. It makes sense.
Cause we're recommending that those types of uses be continued in those existing zones, existing light industrial zones, which.
What section is that? That's the eight one, point five?
Gateway Plan Development District.
Yeah, it's eight point one, point five.
Create, create a first.
So I guess first we should probably go on whether we want to say consistent or inconsistent. Or, cause I mean, if we're all going to agree and make one statement, then.
We say something like, it's, it's inconsistent, although it promotes economic and industrial use. It is inconsistent with the use, with the.
Broaden the time, time.
With the, with the, uh, gateway plan development district use, proposed use. It's the philosophy and policy of the chapter. Does anyone want to make a stab at it or just? What? Right.
Pick one.
So it'd be a. So it reads something like the, uh, proposal's inconsistent, inconsistent with section eight of the P O C D. And do we explain? We, we're going to need to explain that. Uh, particularly section eight point two, uh, recommendation number one, as it recommends to limit future commercial development to existing commercially zoned areas. Support of, I mean, I can read the rest of this. Support of efficient use of commercial space by updating zoning regulations to allow multi-unit housing developments only as part of a mixed use building, i.e. first floor, commercial, top floors, residential, uh, to ensure that commercially zoned areas remain available for commercial uses.
It's a commercial zone.
It's, that's the only recommend.
Yes, it is.
So other than it's not limiting the industrial use to an existing industrial zone.
I mean, would, would it go under a special use district then?
Well, I, I think the thing here is maybe that should be a, you know, rather than added in like they're proposing as a, just a permitted use by right, is, is it be a special use?
Yeah, cause it's not specific in.
So, I think if you apply eight point two, point, call it point one there, that first rec, you know, it's limit future of commercial development to existing commercially zoned areas. This is industrial development that probably should follow suit and be limited to existing industrial areas. And in this case, this is a planned development district which does not contemplate the, you know, light industrial uses, um, as such, it would be inconsistent with the P O C D.
So if we pick just one, you could pick that.
I mean, both, it sounds like it's up to the zoning commission anyway to determine the use.
But I, I certainly think that the, you know, what the planning commission has to offer in terms of the discussion here is highly valuable to, yes. Um, and they'll, they'll lean on that if they need to.
So what you said.
So I guess.
So it would sound like the proposal is inconsistent with section eight point two, recommendation one of the P O C D in that it does not limit future commercial development and or light industrial development to existing light industrial zones. And therefore it's inconsistent. I mean, I just repeated myself twice, but.
So eight two one and eight one five, I guess, in the third tier vote.
I think section nine point one also.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So I guess per those three recommendations, we can say it's inconsistent, I guess.
Eight point one, eight point five, and section nine point one, the philosophy.
Yeah, it's eight point one, point five, eight point two, recommendation one, and nine point one.
I think that's the easiest way.
And that's because it does not continue to promote light industrial uses within existing light industrial zones. Cause if we just say it's inconsistent with those sections, I think legally you're going to say, well, why, right?
Right.
Anybody else have any other comments?
The reasoning is because it does not limit future industrial. Commercial zones, is that what you said?
I have it, uh, inconsistent with sections eight point one, eight point five, and section nine point one of the P O C D because it does not promote light industrial use within existing light industrial zones. As recommended, that we continue commercial uses in existing commercial zones.
There's no further discussion. I can, if we can try to entertain a motion or. And does anyone want to give a try? Or just this? Okay. Take your time.
So this is in motion, but. This is.
Did.
No. No.
Do you want me to write it? I think I got it.
I mean, I have something too, but I just.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say it's inconsistent with sections eight point two, eight point, um, eight point one, point five, and nine point one, because it does not promote light, light industrial uses in light industrial zones. And I think there was another statement that I wanted to add there too. Was there more?
I just have those three, three, uh, I think just suggestions.
I just added on was that it, the recommendation is that we continue to promote existing commercial uses in existing commercial zones. Change that to light industrial, or you can refer to both of them. Call it commercial and light industrial, lump it all together.
Cause it, because it does not promote commercial slash light industrial. Use.
In existing, I would say, light industrial zones.
In existing.
And the only reason I caution that is because the Gateway Plan Development District allows commercial, commercial, retail. So it allows commercial. So if we use the word commercial, how that's defined is kind of comparative.
So where are you putting commercial?
So I, I was using the word commercial and trying to lump it together and now I'm caught, I'm second guessing myself. So I think maybe just refer to it as light industrial, but the P O C D refers to it as commercial. So how we had to. I'm just thinking, if you were in court, judge is going to say that's commercial use. Is it not in the Gateway Plan Development District? Tell me, how is this inconsistent?
Right.
Yeah.
Now, we specifically specified light industrial. That is clearly different than what we allow in the Gateway Plan Development District. So.
Okay, sections, what I said before.
Eight point one, eight point two, eight point five, and section nine point one.
Cause it does not promote light industrial use in industrial zones.
I think that's fine.
All right. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Anyone want it? Did you want to try?
I'll take a shot.
Okay.
Um, I am gonna, uh, we, the planning commission is, the, the text amendment is inconsistent with sections eight point one, point five, eight point two, and nine point one, because it does not promote light industrial use in existing industrial zones.
With eight, eight point two, point one, or is it the whole, at all? With eight two one or?
Eight, eight point one, eight point five, eight point two, and nine point.
Oh, eight point two, okay.
That was eight point one, point five?
Eight point one, point five.
I don't.
Could we say eight point two, point, two, one?
Yeah, eight point two, recommendation one.
But then also section eight point one, right?
Point five.
And eight point five itself. Yep.
Uh, I didn't write eight point five.
Okay. There's no eight five. Eight point five, all right. So eight point one, point five, and eight point two, and nine.
Recommendation one.
Recommendation one and section nine point.
Right.
There's another. Eight point one?
Point five. Section eight point two, recommendation one, and section nine point.
Should we read back just so that we are all on the same page?
Yeah.
Sure, if you want to read it.
Inconsistent with the P O C D sections eight point one, point five, eight point two, recommendation one, nine point one, because the amendment does not promote light industrial use in existing industrial zones.
Sounds good.
Do I have a second?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I guess.
Cindy.
Sure. I get your most of what you guys are saying up there for this one, sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, for your input. Okay, let's see. Municipal referrals, we don't have any sub, on, we don't have old business, um, subdivision regulation, section four, application submission procedure. Do you have any updates on that?
I don't have much of an update on that. I'm still working on that. That's a work in progress. So as soon as I make some more progress on it, I will let you know and bring it forward. Yeah, we had a, a bit of comment from the town attorney on that to kind of go through, so.
Okay.
Working on that.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up is the lot line revision for Heritage Subdivision at Catbird Lane, Hathaway Farm LLC. The applicant is East Line Trant Land Trust. Uh, an application for a lot line revision of approximately four point one acres of land located at Catbird Lane. Uh, we received the application on August seventh. Mr. Garrity, do you want to speak on that?
Thank, yes, I do. Uh, as you may recall, and just so the record is clear through the, the, it's a joint application from the land trust and Hathaway Farm LLC. This is a parcel of land in that subdivision that was listed along with various other parcels on at least one page that said open space, but the individual parcels were not identified as, um, being open space. So, um, at, i- instead it was owned by K S K Associates. And I think you may recall, Mr. Harney was here, spoke to this commission about this, um, last month, uh, I believe it was, as that he's, uh, part of Hathaway Farm LLC and is making the application. In terms of that, this property, um, was part of the subdivision. There were revisions to that subdivision and I can show the commission here. This, this was the original subdivision just at the time that. There were two phases to the subdivision. The lots that you see that are still shown on the map, I'm handing you.
Thank you.
For the lots that were developed, and then to the top of the page, there's an area of blank space. That was, uh, conveyed to New England Forestry. And then Mr. Harney, if we're looking at the survey map, uh, came into this commission, um, actually, we come to the commission. He, he came in and wanted to do a boundary line adjustment. This, this area that I have shown in here was all approved building lots. This area above it was also approved. That was conveyed to New England Forestry. The town received a conservation easement from them, and then Mr. Harney conveyed. The town received a conservation easement from them, and then Mr. Harney conveyed this area into open space as well. That's important for a couple of reasons, because on the map, you'll see down in the, I know it's a little bit difficult, but it says remaining land of K S K Associates, and that is the parcel that we're dealing with here tonight. And these, we show the proposed split, and it's actually, did split already, the Land Trust owns a portion of property as shown on that map, and then Hathaway Farm received the other portion of the property that is the subject to the lot line revision. So my client obtained a deed to the one point six acres on that which we're seeking to address through the lot line revision. This split, so the, the larger parcel was approximately four acres, and it was split so that the Land Trust is retaining the area on the second exhibit I gave you that is designated parcel A. Parcel B is the parcel we're proposing for, as a building lot. So with regard to this, the issue came up as to whether or not, or what constitutes a building lot. Under the zoning regulations, a building lot is defined as par, as follows, excuse me, under the, yeah, zoning regulations, it's similar to the subdivision, but a plot of, or parcel of land occupied or capable of being occupied by one principal building and the accessory buildings, or uses customarily incidental to it, including such open space as is required by the regulations. In the case of multiple dwellings, row dwellings, institutional or commercial buildings, a group of buildings under the same ownership may be considered as occupying the lot. Section five point three of the Town of Eastline zoning regulations then sets forth the dimensional requirements, that the lot size must be under five point three point one. In an R V U forty district, which this is, it shall not be less than forty thousand square feet. This lot is fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-five square feet. Section five point three two deals with frontage, and defines it as each lot shall have not less than a hundred and fifty feet of frontage unless the lot is located on the half circle of a cul-de-sac where there's a seventy, where seventy-five foot frontage will be allowed. This lot has a two hundred and eighty-six feet of frontage on Cedarbrook Lane. That provides for Section five point three three setbacks, no building or structure shall be placed on a lot less than fifty feet from the street line or any other property line. If you look at the parcel B on the first page of the second exhibit I gave you, you can see that we meet the setback requirements for the property, and the reason I'm going through all this is because it's been our position that this is a, hasn't always been a building lot, provided you can meet the other requirements for constructing a house or structure on the lot in the zone that you're in. Section five point three point four coverage, the total lot coverage shall not exceed fifteen percent of the lot area, if you look at the tables on there, this is less than fifteen percent. No building, Section five point three five, this is no building or structure shall exceed thirty feet in height. This would not, because it would be a residential dwelling. The, then, so this is sort of the crux of the issue here. The issue was whether or not, and Mr. Harney and Mr. Geischel had a conversation after the last hearing adjourned about this, and it's not, we don't believe it's a subdivision for a number of reasons. First, it's an existing lot in the, in an approved subdivision. It was never formally dedicated as open space, and it was never accepted by the town or the Land Trust as open space at, at the time. And thereafter, and there is a bit of a lack of documentation as to how it occurred, but the balance of the subdivision that had been approved for development was then transferred to New England Forestry. Enter Mr. Harney who acquires the remaining land in the subdivision, including the remaining approved lots, who then comes in and conveys more of that property to that, as part of that makes the boundary line adjustment. It's, it's important, and this is why we don't believe that a subdivision is required, because we're taking an existing lot in this subdivision, and we are dividing it, not quite in half, a little bit more to the Land Trust than Hathaway Farm would get, but we're simply, we're not creating a new lot, it exists. The land that's being created, sort of a second parcel, is going to the Land Trust, that's conservation land, and under your regulations, doesn't constitute a subdivision or a re-subdivision. The other point I would note here on the first plan I gave you, which is the approved subdivision plan that was recorded in the land records, is the certification that Mr. Geischel put on this in two thousand sixteen, where he indicates at the very end that this division of land in this property in parcels does not meet the definition of a subdivision or re-subdivision. I think that's important because the, the issue that, um, we were...
That's on the plan?
Yes, yes. Right. The, the issue was whether or not it constitute, this constitutes a subdivision or a re-subdivision of the land, because under your subdivision regulations, it says four point seven, or four dash seven dash one, any change in the geometrical configuration of a lot or lots on an approved subdivision map filed and recorded with the town clerk shall be subject to review and approval by the director of planning for the conformance with these regulations if the revisions result in substantially different or off-site impacts, and then if so, the plan shall be forwarded to the planning commission for approval. From our perspective, a lot line revision is the proper legal means, and that's, that, we're, we're not, I, I don't think anybody's contesting that the lot exists there as, in that form. The question is, in order to get a building permit and zoning approval, do we need, can it be done by a lot line revision, or must it go back in for subdivision? Our, our position is the lot line revision is the appropriate thing. First, subdivision is the splitting of land to create building lots. That's not happening, additional building lots. That's not happening here. We have a lot, as evidenced by the recorded map, that indicates it's the remaining land of K S K Associates. So the land was never placed in, in open space, never subject to conservation easements, none of that happened, and, and that's where it brings us back to what was done with regard to Mr. Harney acquired the property, putting more land in there, and the larger piece into open space, which had already been approved for development, by, I forget exactly how many lots, but it was significant. Something occurred back then where the town and, and the plans changed, and everybody was okay with it because the town signed off on the conservation easement and accepted the property, or, excuse me, accepted the conservation easement, New England Forestry took it subject to the town's conservation easement. So from my perspective in looking at this, it's an existing lot, and it would be considered buildable if it can meet all the other zoning requirements, and there were subdivision regulations in terms of lot size, setback, et cetera. And it doesn't require an application to this commission for subdivision or re-subdivision approval because we're not creating an additional building lot. It's there, and therefore, the lot line revision is the most appropriate way. From a zoning regulation requirement perspective, the lot exceeds the required forty thousand square feet, as I noted, the frontage requirement is exceeded almost twofold. The setbacks exceed all the required minimums, and the building coverage is less than fifteen percent. The Town of Eastline subdivision regulation perspective is the configuration of the three point eight seven acre property was created by a lot line revision, which was recorded in Draw six, seven ninety-six, that's the map that I gave you, and that's this area up here where Mr. Harney created some additional lots as a result of that. So if, if that didn't result in a requirement for subdivision, there's no possible way that I can conclude that this requires a subdivision, in fact, it can be done just like that, the adjustment back in two thousand sixteen, which was by, by lot line revision. The lot line revision plan identified in the remain, for that remaining land, um, excuse me, again, read my notes of that. Right, so the conservation easement was obtained by the town on the, on the two larger parcels there. And there's nothing on this map that indicates that the town retained any rights to this parcel that we're talking about on the, the second exhibit that I gave you. In fact, the only note on there indicates that the town retained no interest in it because it refers to the fact that it's the remaining land of K S K Associates. Additionally, the town assessor has assigned a tax number to this parcel, as lot, assessor's map thirty-six, lot, yeah, map thirty-six, lot thirty, three, thirty-one. The assessor has collected real taxes, real property taxes on the property. The Land Trust has agreed to provide a conservation easement on the parcel B that, is there, I have Mr. Torrance here from the Land Trust, in case there's any questions with respect to that. And Ledzlight Health District has found the proposed lot suitable in its current condition for domestic septic on that. Plans that we prepared is done by a professional engineer, there is a proposed primary and reserve leaching system, more than twenty-five feet from the property lines, there were additional test holes that were identified on the property, two test holes in the primary system area have been addressed by moving the system, so there were some question when Ledzlight looked at this about where the system should be and whether they wanted additional test holes. We did that, and we received the approval from Ledzlight for that. So with respect to this, it really comes down to, and what we're asking the commission is whether or not, given the data that you have before it, it is sufficient for Mr. Geischel as the planning administrator to be able to sign off, such as he did on the two thousand sixteen plan, on a lot line revision, or is this commission going to insist that this needs to come back for a subdivision approval? And getting to the subdivision, if that's the case, then the logical conclusion is it would have to be a re-subdivision, which is changing not only the boundary line, but creating additional lots, and no additional lot is being created here. The boundary line of the property is not changing, what's happening is the property is being divided, and the, the, I don't wanna call it the remaining land, but the other land is going to the Land Trust in conservation, and therefore, that doesn't create any additional lot. So we think, based on what we've been able to review through the town records, that the appropriate means to address this issue in terms of getting zoning approval and a building permit is through a lot line revision.
Any questions?
Yeah, I definitely have a question.
Yeah.
What is the purpose of this map here? Because, put on a second question, question.
Yeah.
This piece of property that is, is the one that you're talking about, the hatch on?
Correct.
This piece of property doesn't even really show on this map here.
Yeah.
It's off of the edge, so I don't, I don't understand the point of looking at this one if it doesn't fully describe the lot.
Well, so, so it's referring to this piece here, and it goes around, and it says that area is the remaining land of S, K S K Associates. The purpose of this lot is to show you that in the past, this very subdivision changed, lot lines were moved, and no subdivision, no subdivision application or re-subdivision application was required. It was done previously through a lot line revision in order to accomplish that, so, because one of the arguments that we, that we were hearing from staff was that, well, when you change the geometric form of this, or you change the, the boundary lines within, within an approved subdivision, you have to come back and, and have a lot line subdivision, unless you fall into, which we believe we do, the, I don't wanna call it an exception, but the, the language in four dash seven dash one, where any change in the geometric configuration of a lot or lots in it, on an approved subdivision map, shall be filed and recorded with the town clerk, shall be, that, and subject to review and approval by the director of planning for conformance. This lot, setting aside everything else, conforms with all the zoning and subdivision regulations in terms of setbacks, et cetera. The only purpose of this is to show you that in this very subdivision, a lot line adjustment of that very nature was already done through the planning's, planning director's office, and not having to come back in for a subdivision, a re-subdivision, which gets me back to that point. If subdivision is the creation of three or more lots, or a re-subdivision is the creation of additional lots or the modification of existingly, existing approved lot boundaries, this is none of those. This is simply saying we have an existing building lot owned by Hathaway Farm, that we want to adjust the interior lot line on, so that a portion of it goes into open space, and then the balance can go seek approval from zoning, for a zoning permit and a building permit, ultimately.
Okay, well, I'm still confused. So this piece of property that skirts this whole Mud Meadow Lark Lane here, that's the one that we said was open space?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, you didn't say that was open space, but...
It was conveyed as open space, this whole thing, right?
No, none of that was, that's the point, none of that was ever conveyed as open space. It's now, the Land Trust owns it now.
Okay.
It had been conveyed to them, and then that is owned by Hathaway Farm.
And this property line was never defined?
Well, it was never approved. And, and, and so that's what we're seeking approval of.
So he owns the whole thing, he just wants to separate the lot?
Right, separate the lot, give that portion to the Land Trust, and then the balance of the lot could be developed as a single family lot.
Gary, did you have any further discussions with the attorney on this, because it's a complicated issue that was never really worked on?
Kurt and Tom are not at the last meeting, and so if you go to the July eight materials, so what was, I, there's some MyLars here, and I had highlighted this area, and you can see, if I can maybe rotate this upright. So here's Meadow Lark Lane, here's the subject parcel, this pink area, the hashed area is what got conveyed to the Land Trust. So if I zoom in on this, at the bottom right-hand corner, this says open space. This says open space over here, so I think it was identified as an area of open space that was not conveyed to the town. That being said, we know areas of open space are identified on subdivision plans, and the open space will can move as the plan, as the subdivision, if it's a phased subdivision. That being said, policy-wise, I think it behooves the commission to adopt a policy that if you're gonna phase a subdivision and defer the open space, that those areas be identified early on, that's the whole point of identifying the open space early on, so that it doesn't continue to get mishmashed, removed, and massaged, and basically, you know, less useful, if you will, as open space. That being said, I, I look at, here's filed, these are copies from filed MyLars, you can see there's the stamp here from the planning commission, so it's, and here's the clerk's stamp right over here. So if this is the configuration of the lots, as was filed on the land record, and if I read the definition of a re-subdivision, a change in the map and approve a recorded subdivision or re-subdivision, if such change affects any street layout, which this does not, on such map, or B, affects any area reserved thereon for public use, could be argued that the open space was gonna be public, but again, it was never conveyed, so it's off the table, in my opinion. Or diminishes the size of any lot shown thereon, that, in fact, this split does, and creates an additional building lot, if any of the lots shown thereon had been conveyed after the approval or recording of such map, which in this case, all of these lots on Meadow Lark had been conveyed after the approval. So my opinion is that it'd be a re-subdivision by definition, because it's creating an additional building lot that was never contemplated. It was never, there's no setbacks here when they came in with this subdivision. And on the map that was recorded in Draw six, number seven ninety-six, that was submitted to tonight, which was a lot line, again, lot line revision, I believe, something that I was eligible to approve, you'll know at the end of that, they did a re-subdivision of roughly three lots. On the, on the south side of Goldfinch Terrace, you'll see that they're not numbered, there's no circle in the middle, but that was a re-subdivision of land to create those three additional building lots. So while this might have been an existing lot of record, it was, it was this open space initially. initially. So I don't know, I think naturally it was never approved or contemplated as a building lot. Even if the developer at that time thought maybe in the future they would build it up, nonetheless, so obviously for the purposes of conservation, they're allowed to, to convey land and divide land. But now we're getting into, this is beyond, you know, I'm trying to figure out for the purposes of conservation, you're cutting this, what, half, roughly, what is it, half acre off to create a building lot? I'm not sure how that promotes conservation, but it is what it is.
Wait a minute, so, so that is all open conservation or around?
Well, no, it's not dedicated, not deeded. There's no title to it. So the developer held on to it. It never got conveyed. Whereas there was, so I have as part of those application materials.
So, look, well, okay, so at some point they did convey land, but they stopped right at that line. Is that a true statement? Like they conveyed something?
Yes.
As open space?
I believe the land trust holds it, holds title to it. It is not, no conservation is upon it.
Right, so just to be clear, the client went ahead and conveyed a portion of this parcel to the land trust under the impression that, or understanding that by that conveyance, because it's a conservation conveyance, it wasn't creating a building lot or anything that needed approval from this commission. The recognition of this as a approved lot for purposes of getting a zoning and building permit does require either an acknowledgement from Mr. Geisell as the planning director or something from this commission saying that it recognized it as a building lot. What, to, to address one of Mr. Geisell's comments too, there, there is, and I think we submitted it in one of the prior hearings, there's an opinion letter from O'Brien, I think it was O'Brien, or it was Block Chaney at the time, when Attorney Block was representing the commission, who discussed the issue of open space, that it could be essentially banked or reserved until the final subdivision. And that looks like, that's, Gary's correct, that looks like what, it's what happened here. So, certain areas were shown as potential open space, but not specifically designated as that. And then subsequent to that, New England Forestry comes in, the developer says, you know what, we're going to take that entire second phase, which is what it was, and we're going to donate that into open space. And then, for some reason, nothing else has to be done on that. Whether it was oversight, whatever, we don't know. There's nothing that I think any of us could find in the record that indicates exactly what the, what the thinking was with regard to that. But when we look at it and we say, well, okay, regardless of what is or isn't in the record, this is what it is factually. It's an existing piece of land that was part of an approved subdivision that can meet all the other requirements for a building lot on here. And in definition, and it meets the definition of a lot on, under the zoning regulations.
I have another question. So you, they conveyed land, but there was no defined line at that time for where the lot that they conveyed is. Is that a true statement?
No, there, there was. It's this area right here.
Yeah, I see, I see that, I guess my confusion is like, how do you convey, convey something without there being a lot liner?
Well, you, unfortunately, you could do it all the time and I, I do a lot of title work, I see it all the time too. So they, they divide, they did, they did a survey, they divided it up, right? And conveyed that out thinking that because it was a conveyance to a, of conservation land, it wouldn't have any impact on the buildability of the slot. We talked with staff, staff took a different position, we said, okay, we disagree with that. And you may remember Mr. Harnigan was here saying, we're just trying to figure out whether this commission sees it appropriate for Mr. Geisell to sign off on this or whether you think we need to come back to you with a formal application for subdivision or re-subdivision as the case may be. We think we don't, we think a lot line is sufficient, particularly based on the evidence of the new map, it's not the new map, but a map we found just recently. But ultimately, that's a decision this commission has to make.
So this is not deeded yet?
No, it is.
And that's what you want us to decide to just allow you to deed it?
No, no. Guess what we're saying is, we want, we think a lot line revision solves the, the issue if, if that's approved. If lot line revision is approved administratively, then we can go to zoning, because then it would say, yes, this lot is valid as it stands. You can go get your other permits if you, if you can satisfy what other requirements you have. But then, but then the issue came up when we were discussing this afterwards, that Gary thought probably more likely a subdivision or re-subdivision under the regulations. We disagreed. We said, look, you know, talk with the client, client said, let's just go in, put it before the commission, the commission can ultimately make a decision as to whether or not they believe it's good to be signed off on administratively or you want us to come back with a formal application.
Even if it wasn't a lot line revision, you still can refer it to us to make a decision to approve it though, even if there were significant changes being done?
Right, but because of the difference of opinion here and my level of comfortability with signing off on it, I, because I think it's a re-subdivision by definition based on what I see here, but there is an argument to be said that it was an existing lot. So I wouldn't, I would definitely say it's an existing lot. It was an existing lot that was created years ago, but it was never approved as a building lot, nor was it ever approved as open space. I think there is a stronger argument to say that it was approved as open space because those are on the maps that are filed. It, it's labeled as open space. Fact that it wasn't conveyed, I'm not sure what happened there, because two parcels of land that are not on either of these that got conveyed to the town. So it's really, but there's, as Mr. Gary said, there's no documentation that really tells us what they were intending to do with this. So I've looked high and low as I think they have. So we really just need clarification from the commission as to whether or not this would be a re-subdivision or if a lot line revision in fact is suitable.
If I could, I'd like to, I'd like to ask Mr. Torrance, who's a member of the land trust, to address him because the land trust is sort of the ones who looked into this one, were looking at it to deed it to them. He's got some background on the actual open space conveyance portion of it.
When I say open space, the original one for Kavanouski, the...
Jeff Torrance, one ninety-seven Upper Patagonia Road. Last month, I gave you an authorization for the land trust for me to act on their behalf in regard to this matter. So as we discussed last month, a conservation cut, separation of a piece of property in which property is conveyed to, to a land trust is, is permissible pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes, I think it's eight dash eighteen. And the land trust has done that several times in the, in the last four or five years on Upper Patagonia Road, on Holmes Road, on, with Hathaway property, where, you know, a large portion of the property is, is conveyed into open space and a small amount. In this particular instance, I think it's important in looking at this, that this, what the effect of, of this particular 2016 lot line revision plan did. The, the original conveyance of, of that land that surrounds Meadowlark that you have in front of you on the lot line revision plan was actually larger than that in, in the past. And as part of this 2016 lot line revision plan, this, about three acres of it was, was incorporated into that hundred and sixty-six acres that, that was conveyed to, so if you go to the next one. No, no, yeah, yeah.
Well, this one's got the area that I...
You had another one with the pink, excuse me for a second, I'll, I have a copy of it. No, that's not it.
This one here?
So, I don't have a highlighter.
So this one here, maybe this one shows it up?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's, that's the one, all right.
So this pink actually continues.
So, so that pink line actually continued where he's got the hash marks and then up on the east side of Catbird Lane. That was all part of this lot, or parcel of, of, of land. And as part of, of the 2016 lot line revision, the, this particular, that particular section got added to what became this hundred and sixty-six acre lot that, that was, was, that was, was conveyed into open space in which the town obtained the, the conservation easement. So it, it was separated once before, as recently as 2016 pursuant to this, to this map. The other thing that it did was it, was it created additional open space within the subdivision that was, was never anticipated. The original plan for, for this, I only happen to have one copy, was, was for, as Attorney Garrity said, was for significantly greater number of lots. So all, or most of that, that, that phase two identified on those lots is, is with the exception of two or three lots on the end of, what is it, Goldfinch up there on the top, has been, been conveyed into open space. So the effect of that was that within this subdivision of its three hundred and thirty-six acres, two hundred and twenty-five acres are, have been placed in, in open space. And as, as I indicated last month to this commission, as, as a retired developer, the way that it was done in the nineties and in the early two thousands in East Lime was on the plans, you would indicate the ability to, to provide open space, it's done differently now, but, but back then, that's how it was done. It was you, you, you said, I can put open space here and I can put open space there. And then what would happen as, as the subdivision progressed, because you weren't required as, as, you could defer it, just like you can now. And what would happen over the course of the sub, the development of a large tract of land like this, or others that I did, was that, that the staff would come and say, we'd rather have this area or that area as opposed to this area and, and, and it would just fall off. So if, as I indicated last month, if you look at, at the Darrow's Ridge subdivision and Nottingham Hill subdivision, there's areas within those subdivisions that show on the early plans as potential open space that are now building lots. And, and there are additional areas that were just part of the remaining land, which is the way it used to be referred to, that, that are now open space. So if you look at the application that's before you this evening, that was, that was originally going to be a lot larger of, of an area and forty acres was conveyed to the East Lime Land Trust for open space purposes as opposed to the property being developed. And that wasn't originally anticipated as part of the open space for, for the subdivision, but it ultimately became that further on down the line. So the, the other thing I would, would note that, that, that this 2016 plan essentially amended the, the, the open space plan for this, this subdivision. So, so it, if you look at the, the note on the plan, and, and I agree with Mr. Scott, it's not as clear as it could be, but it clearly identifies the parcel that's remaining, the, the four acres. It, it's the remaining land of KSK Associates. So, you know, the, the bottom line is that, that the subdivision regulations at that point in time required ten percent open space and, and you got upwards of seventy percent within this subdivision as, as, as open space. And there's not, this isn't the only parcel that was identified as potential open space within the heritage subdivision. There are a couple of more parcels that, that are still hanging out there that I made Mr. Geisell aware of, that the land trust is working with the Kavanouski family who, who is, is the successor developer of, of that subdivision to, to acquire. So there, there, there aren't, there are parcels. Also, the, the area that was, was identif, one of the areas that was identified, not to get too off track here, was, is potential open space on one of the maps, was subdivided as part of, back in 2014 or so within the subdivision. And, and the town did get a conservation easement on, on a portion of this property. Mr. Carlson and I met with Mr. Geisell last week and, and Mr. Carlson is, is fine with the land trust providing, actually offered to, to deed their portion of this property to the town or alternatively put a conservation easement on the two point seven of the three point eight acres in favor of the town. And there's a standard form conservation easement that the, the land trust uses that this commission has routinely approved in, in the past. So from the land trust perspective, their conveyance or acceptance of, of a portion of this property was, was legal under the exemption provided by the Connecticut general statutes. So I don't know if that helps.
Totally clarifies the, the current configuration.
Right, right. So, so it's been conveyed to the land trust. The land trust is exempt from, from, from having to come to the commission to, to, to request it be, be split off so long as it's for conservation purposes, which is in fact, you know, what, what, what's occurring. And, and, you know, as part of this lot line revision plan, the, Mr. Carlson has, has agreed to, to convey a conservation easement on that two point seven acres to the town. The town does, by the way, use a portion of this at the end of, on the east side of, or no, the west side of Catbird for stormwater discharge. And, and the subdivision's been around long enough so there's a prescriptive easement, obviously. But there, there was no, normally, where stormwater is discharging onto private property, the town, you know, at least Mr. Geisell insists upon, you know, getting an easement from, from the landowner.
So at least on this map that you can see there, this area adjacent to Cedar Brook, this is where we have some storm drainage that comes out into this. this is where we have some storm drainage that comes out into this little area. There's this little stream that runs back here. I don't have another map.
It's an intermittent water course that's created by the fact that you're discharging stormwater from a catch basin into that area. And it's created a rill in the ground. And that's part of the land that is being conserved as open space in this particular proposal. Well, regardless of what this commission does, it's being preserved as open space.
Yeah. Gary, can you remind us the functional difference between just a lot line revision and a subdivision? Can you remind us, like, what the impact difference is?
Yeah, sure.
You know, from a procedure point of view, for a cost point of view, like, I mean, because it's not clear which path we should go. I mean, at least in my opinion, and it's not clear. So, I mean, I'm wondering if there's some way we can compromise on it. I mean, it's still not clear to me.
So, section, yeah, section 4-7 of the regulations, revisions to lot configuration, any change in the geometrical configuration of a lot or lots on an approved subdivision map filed and recorded with the town clerk shall be subject to review and approval by the director of planning for conformance with these regulations. If the proposed revision or revisions result in substantially different on and off-site impacts, the plan shall be forwarded to the planning commission for approval. 4-7-2 says, "Upon approval by the planning commissioner or director of planning, a map showing the revision must be filed with the town clerk, signed by the chairman or secretary of the commission or director of planning with date of approval noted thereon." End of the section. So, there's not a whole lot of guidance there as far as, so, based on what you're seeing, yes, they're revising a lot line. Then, I turn the page and I go back to definitions, and this is where I got hung up on, I'll start with the definition of a subdivision.
Well, I mean, like, I mean, like, the process and like, are there fees involved going one way versus the other? And like, I mean, why don't we just, what's, why, like, you have one opinion, they have one opinion, why are they not following the opinion of the town?
So, if you apply for a re-subdivision, obviously, the fee would be greater than what they paid because it's going to require a public hearing. So, there's a public hearing fee that they have to deal with.
If I can address that.
It's a significant difference in cost.
There's the difference in cost. There's also the difference in the process and the time that it takes. You get a published notice, etc. A lot line revision, if done administratively, is done in a week or two, or whatever. Whereas subdivision, you've got to post notice, we have to have a hearing, there are time deadlines and so forth, so you're looking at a longer period of time. Practically speaking, that's already happened, you know, but there was a disagreement as to which approach was the most appropriate, and we both agreed, "Look, we'll come to this commission and explain what our differences are in terms of which one, each approach, and then ultimately follow the commission's guidance on this."
So, this other part we're not paying taxes on, the part that's not your potential building lot?
Correct, not anymore.
And then you're paying, and you're paying taxes on this lot that you're potentially going to build on?
Correct, yeah.
Do you need any further clarification?
Yeah, I thought you were calling back.
So, I was going to go back just to the definition of a subdivision, which is the division of a tract or parcel of land into three or more parts or lots made subsequent to the adoption of subdivision regulations by the commission on September 9, 1952, for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of sale or building development expressly excluding the development for municipal conservation or agricultural purposes, and includes re-subdivisions pursuant to Chapter 126, Section 8-18 of the Connecticut statutes. And then, the definition of a re-subdivision, as I had already read, is the change in the map and approved subdivision. So, then you go back to this, you know, lot, revisions to lot configuration. Again, it's a change in the geometrical configuration of a lot or lots on an approved subdivision map. So, there's a little confusion there, but being that, you know, my, the way I've interpreted this is this creating a building lot because there was no house there ever proposed before, contemplated, and now you've got one. At the same time, the land's never conveyed as open space. It was an existing lot of record that floated around for a while. I would note, on the application, on page two, we just got to clarify both lot numbers. The assessor's lot number was identified as Map 36, Lot 31, and Lot 31.
Because the assessor has not split the property. So, if you go on the East Line GIS right now, and you look at the property, notwithstanding the fact that the land trust took title to this, to their piece back in December, the assessor hasn't assigned a separate map and lot number to the land trust property, number one. And, you know, so, and then the tax, from a tax, property tax perspective, the land trust is a valid 501(c)(3), you know, land trust whose properties aren't typically taxed.
See, the GIS shows it's not, doesn't reflect the split that's been filed.
And in fact, it still shows KSK Associates as being the owner.
So, that'll get updated probably closer to the end.
And so, normally, you, sometimes when you see these things, if, when you press View Details and it goes to the assessor's card, you'll see that there's a change there, but there's not. It's still showing KSK and, right? So, nothing's been updated from that perspective. But the land trust won't pay property taxes on their 2.71 acres. And if the conservation easement is on anymore, happy.
Gary, in that, in your definition of re-subdivision, you said it was three or more?
That's the definition of subdivision. Yep.
So, the three would be parcel B, parcel A, and then this conservation area?
The conservation area would be parcel B. Yeah, just two lots. That's, clearly, under the definition of a subdivision, couldn't be that. So, it's either lot line, re-subdivision. And looking at the, you know, the definition of that is a change in the configuration that results in substantially different on- or off-site impacts. And this really isn't, there's no change here that's having a substantial impact on it. Essentially, taking a portion of it and saying, "It's clearly going to be open space now. The others are building lots."
It seems unfortunate that it was, but it's not.
Yeah.
I do think that it's important to note, as I said, that what was originally envisioned as part of the subdivision, you know, was 100 more lots, right, which ultimately went into open space, right? So, there was a shifting, obviously, of where the open space was going to be located. You know, there was a specific deed to the town for two portions of property, right? So, there was a reason that the town requested and accepted two portions of property, and they didn't accept four others. So, why, no one knows why it did. But the most logical reason is, I think, what I had explained over the way that it was, the way that the process worked back in the 1990s when this occurred in the early 2000s, which is that you identified potential areas and then came back and dedicated them at a future basis. You know, if you look at the Nottingham Hills subdivision, Mr. Frazier, who was the first electorate at the time, wanted a parcel that wasn't even part of the Nottingham Hills subdivision for open space so that what's now the Goodwin Trail could be built. And so, we started with open space being in one area, and then we turned around and gave the town a deed for 45 acres adjacent to, or was it Turnpike, adjacent to the Yale property, which, you know, just changed.
So, anyone have any further questions?
What does the commission feel? Do we want to make a determination whether we, at this point, or do you want to do more research, or in terms of whether?
Well, I have a comment.
Sure.
My only comment is, if it's, you know, I'm finding a hard time understanding exactly whether or not this is falls into one category or another. And my thought is, just for clarity's sake, maybe we do go the route with the formal subdivision. That's my, that's my only thought. And also, I'll also add that we do love open space, and just want to say thanks for all the open space that was given in the past. But I don't think that that should necessarily guide our decisions here. I mean, I just say, my personal thought is, for clarity, I think we should just go with the regular subdivision. But that's just me.
Yeah, I think it should be a determination at some point by the planning commission in terms of, I know their rules and regulations were different 20 years ago, but it's a lot of issues that kind of hard to resolve because it's hard to find the information or whatever. So, it might be the best way for us, at some point, to make a, you know, make a decision on a subdivision or whatever. But.
Yeah. My opinion is, it's one lot. And how long was this other division, I mean, you're saying it has to be go through the process of a subdivision, right? And that's usually three lots or more, so.
Or adding a building lot.
Adding a building lot is what?
Well, the subdivision is already pre-existing. How old was this subdivision?
Since 1990 something.
It's like finding a lot and it's pre-existing, you know, it's like, I don't know. It's there.
But it's not, from what I've seen, it wasn't clear that it was a building lot.
Yeah, the lines weren't, they weren't clear. But now, what happens is they're going to clear the line, but then you have to go through the whole process just to get one lot. I don't know how hard that is, but it sounds like.
Well, they meet all the other criteria. I mean, they've done the test pits.
They've done everything else.
They've done everything else. So, they've demonstrated that a house will fit there.
Yeah.
It's not, that I'm not worried about. It's the procedural part here that I'm hung up on.
Yeah, that's the thing. If we go through that process, it's just going to result in an approval of that, so, I don't know if it's worth it or not. Either way, I guess.
I mean, I think if the commission approves a lot, as a lot line revision, it's, you have the right to do that. I think you also have the right to interpret it and see it as a re-subdivision. It's.
I think it's a good point that either way this goes, this can end up being a buy lot. Is that true? Is that a true statement? Regardless of what we decide right now, it's going to end up as a building lot? So, for practical.
With few exceptions, yeah. I mean, the remote possibility, you know, but 99.9% chance that it's going to end up as a building lot.
Again, if you expect it as a revision, we still, the commission will still have to make a final determination, no?
He has the.
Well, I have the decision to say that to us anyway.
Correct. So, having brought it here, you can approve it tonight as a lot line revision. And then, when they'll do up the Mylar, and I'll have, you can call you up and you can come in and sign it, like you do other subdivisions when we approve them. Or you can just say, "Gary, we're comfortable. Go ahead and sign it." And at least I have the commission's, you know, okay to go ahead and approve the lot line revision.
But there will still be a formal decision by the commission?
Yeah, there's a formal decision. There's a vote. I'm looking for a vote, or some guidance here that, Gary, this is a re-sub, or just clarity.
Right.
One way or the other.
If the lot line was approved, would not come back to this commission?
Correct. No, it's going to go off to zoning. They're going to apply for a zoning permit, and they're going to, like, look to sell the lot and it's going to be a house. If they, if you find out to be, you know, require a re-subdivision, then they're going to come back with a re-subdivision application. They're going to defer and say, "Look, we've already given the open space, which, more than enough, so that, you know, we're not subject to that requirement. Everything else meets the regulations. It's a frontage lot. We're not building any new road. So, we don't need public improvements. Sightlines are good. Septics tests out, you know, we already know from Lash Light that it's, that the test pits are favorable for septic, so, yeah. It's.
My only other comment would be, is if we set a precedent this way, what impact is that going to have in the future? Because, like, for me, it's not clear right now what the right way to go is. And if we make a decision, it sets a precedent. So, now, forevermore, that precedent, we, could we ever, you know, not follow that precedent and not get in trouble for it, or, you know, or not have it held against the commission?
Well, I would say, the fact that, you know, I mean, I know many attorneys will say, "Okay, if the commission makes a decision, right, you're setting some sort of precedent." Again, I say, "Where's the pattern?" So, you have to, if you make this decision, do you have a history of making this decision, and is there a pattern of doing that over and over and over again? And I think what you heard tonight in terms of the lot line revision is, this property's been manipulated over and over and over again. So, it's not out of character of lot line revision. But again, I mean, I don't know how that plays out in the courts. But I would say precedent is based upon pattern and, you know, something that's happening over time. Before, you can say, "Yeah, there's a precedent for this." Just one action by the commission? No. But would it be taken advantage of? Potentially. I, I don't lie to you. You know, anybody could. And I'm not saying that they, this applicant will. It could be any other applicant. We don't know.
Would you say, I'm sorry, if you say in this case, it is, in the revisions to lot configuration, if the proposed revisions result in substantially different on and off-site impacts, the plan should be forwarded to the planning commission for approval. So, in this case, do you think that's applicable, even if they've proved as a lot line revision?
Well, there's no significant.
You wouldn't say that.
Impacts. I mean, I guess if you wanted to say that, you know, the significant impact is that there's going to be a house where there wasn't one previously proposed. That's a significant change. So, that's where I feel that the re-subdivision was more appropriate because it creates a building lot on a piece of land where nobody actually anticipated a house because the Mylar that's on file says open space. So, I think if I was one of these neighbors, I'd say, "Well, I bought my house. Think it's open space." Now, the town attorney has advised that that's not necessarily enough to, you know, support their claim in a suit. They'd have to demonstrate that they, in fact, did buy their house solely for the purposes of the open space being behind it. That would be a daunting task, I think, but that that was the only reason you bought your house, right? That's hard to do, so.
My personal thought is, for clarity, I think we should go with the subdivision.
And that was a determination by the attorney and you that it was.
Well, I, yeah, I provided his.
I think there was a lot, just a lot.
At the last meeting, I had his, the correspondence that he had sent. I can pull that up if you want to read it again.
Yeah.
I had, this is the memo that I generated based on my discussions with Attorney Carey.
9:30 PM.
Sorry.
Can you make it just a little bit rounder?
Over there.
One more, one more.
More?
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah, okay, so... Scroll. That's a very important, something to mention. Let me just go with that.
And Attorney Carey's, I don't, there's no time.
It's what Gary says, what he says, model the scroll.
So, there's a, Attorney Carey's, all right, if I, um, you know, just let me know when you need to scroll. There's, there's a little bit more of that.
I'm good. Should we take a vote or something? Go through this thing?
Everybody, uh, um, I can entertain a mo-, any other discussion or...
Discussion or motion?
I can entertain a motion, if you're as comfortable with that. Motion to require a subdivision application, I guess?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Want a favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we have something on the new business. Should we, because of the time or whatever, is there, should we ta-, table that or...
Um, you can. I know the applicant's here tonight to discuss it.
Oh, he is, okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, they wanted just to...
Me again.
Oh, okay, no problem, no problem.
I'm like a bad penny.
No, it's all right.
Discussion.
Okay, you're right, I'm sorry.
We have had, uh...
You're right. Um, is it, from the new business, it's a formal review of pre-application sketch, plan under section four one, plan showing lot layout of the Hantuck Highlands, a Connecticut general statute eight thirty G subdivision, Kristen Clark applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. On behalf of Duval Partners and Kristen Clark, my name is Paul Garrity. Um, as you may recall, um, earlier this year, we had pending before you subdivision application for an affordable housing on the Holmes Road. We withdrew that, um, because we were having issues with regard to Ledge Light getting reviews of septic and so forth. In regards to this application, however, we've made some significant changes in terms of the reduction of the density, um, and the type of, uh, housing that would be there. This, what we've done is we have gone from approximately nineteen lots of single-family homes with a component or a portion of the property that was reserved for a component of multifamily housing, including about another twenty to forty units, I forget exactly what the number was. This application that we're planning on, formally submitting to the commission, is simply for twenty single-family lots, um, six of which will be affordable. The balance will be market rate. The multifamily component, um, is not being pursued at all anymore. It would be eliminated by virtue of, of this design. This design actually allows us more flexibility in terms of septic layout, setbacks, creating some distance. But be- before I get into it, um, a little bit more, I just wanna cover a couple items because I'm aware that the zoning commission has been pursuing, um, a potential moratorium on affordable housing in the town. And while under your subdivision regulations, preliminary and formal hearings don't constitute an official application for starting the clock, uh, on, um, the commission's timeframe to hold, conduct, and conclude the hearings and make a decision. My concern is that the zoning commission is, if, if they do get around to passing the moratorium, may try and claim that this is not grandfathered in. We believe that it is. In the case of Kaufman, um, y- y- we believe that it's grandfathered in at this point because it's before this commission is pending, even though it's not a formal application for subdivision, which would be the next step, and that would then trigger the timeframes that the commission has to, to act on that. But, um, in that, in the Kaufman case, an Interfaith case, Kaufman's at three thirty-two Connecticut one twenty-two, and Interfaith is at two twenty-eight Connecticut four ninety-eight. Supreme Court of the State of Connecticut held that the definition of an affordable housing application includes every type of application filed with the commission in connection with an affordable housing proposal. In doing so, eight thirty D, eight thirty G does not incorporate either subdivision or site plan in its deposition, but rather employs a broader term, namely that of development. The, the other issue is that the courts, both in Kaufman and Interfaith, have, um, described eight thirty G applications as being sui generis, which simply means that they're of their own being. They don't follow, um, the typical regulations that we find in both zoning and subdivision regulations. That said, obviously, in terms of this, we're coming in trying to meet as many of the subdivision regulations in terms of setback, lot area, um, frontage, et cetera, in this. In, so in the June eighth meeting, I submitted a revised eight thirty G application for my clients at Holmes Road. I don't see any of that material on the website at this point in time. So it's a bit of a concern because I'm not sure that it's, it's in a file, but I also wanna make sure that to the extent when we come in with a formal application, we know what's been previously submitted, but also what we need to submit for purposes of that application. So we had submitted an A two survey, um, an affordability plan, um, and complied essentially with the basic requirements of an eight thirty G application. So I wanna provide to you a copy of the, this is, oops, your working draft of the application. And the purpose tonight is just to get your initial impressions, um, on this, any concerns, et cetera, that you might have at this stage. I've spoken with Mr. Gage, Gage, when we met previously about after this hearing, we're, uh, setting up, um, meetings with staff too, and our, our professionals to sort of start fine-tuning this and getting, you know, issues that, et cetera, that they may have with respect to this. So, as I said, most notably, we're, we no longer have a multifamily component. So that, that is going to reduce a number of issues in terms of traffic, fire protection, stormwater management, and septic. The revised plans envision twenty single-family lots on two cul-de-sacs, five hundred feet in length, each containing ten lots. That has allowed my client to expand the frontage of each of the lots to a minimum of a hundred and twenty feet in length. It also provides the ability to expand the distance between the dwellings required by the fifty-foot National Fire Protection Code standard on water, on water supplies for suburban and rural firefighting. It also provides a fifty-foot buffer along the frontage of Holmes Road, um, right up here, which had been discussed, uh, before the stormwater plan, excuse me. If the stormwater plan fully complies with that, one of, one of the reasons in terms of creating this larger setback here is that it is more in conformance with the existing properties in terms of all the houses that are out there now, how far they are from the road. So it creates some consistency, at least in terms of the visual, uh, on the street. This, so Mr. May is working on, on the stormwater, but in the prior application, we were able to meet the twenty twenty-three deep stormwater requirements. This proposed plan decreases those dramatically, um, and therefore, because we've reduced the impervious surface, the prior plan had a connector road back here between these two in order to allow for emergency vehicles and, and free flow of traffic through there. With those being gone, um, we have no doubt that we will be able to meet those, uh, stormwater requirements since we were able to do so with a far denser, um, development in the previous plan. The plan also significantly reduces traffic impacts to Holmes Road. My client has had the property surveyed, excuse me, Holmes Road surveyed from Salem Turnpike to the intersection of Upper Walnut, and the road area fully complies with the Ashtow road width requirements for low travel rural roads, which this is. In fact, the town of front, the town of East Line frontage exceeds the requirements by a minimum of four feet on both sides of Holmes Road and Upper Walnut Hill. You may be aware that there were some comments that the road's too narrow, et cetera. Um, it may need to be widened. We've looked at that, and that's what the surveyor's telling, is that it already meets the requirements. It is a narrow road, but it's also a low-traffic road, and therefore it meets the Ashtow requirements for its width on that, and its current design configuration. And that is the app, that, that's the, those are the standards that are applied by the town pursuant to its regulations. We're hoping to have a formal subdivision application submitted to you by September. So, as we sit here tonight, it being August, and I don't, do you meet twice a month? I don't re, just once a month, right? So, I, I know it's, having it dropped in your lap, but I guess the questions that I have is if there are any comments or concerns that you see now, or have, based on the prior application, that you think need to be addressed, and if you can formulate those tonight, that would be great. If not, you can formulate those and provide them to staff so that we can work with staff to try and address all those concerns. I think, however, as I said, one of the biggest, uh, changes here is the elimination of the multifamily housing, um, because that changes the whole, the whole picture of things in terms of water, septic, uh, fire protection, and just traffic volume on that.
Gary, wasn't, going to discuss with the attorney, with somebody, I don't know if it was an attorney or whatever, that whether, uh, eight thirty G statute could be used on subdivision applications, or is that...
I, I don't know if that's really a que-, I, to the best of my knowledge, they can, I, I don't...
Yeah, I thought there was, I thought there was a question at one point, I don't know.
I, I would certainly submit, and I've talked with other lawyers about it too, all agree it's, it's perfectly applicable to subdivision.
Okay.
You don't see it simply because it's usually a multifamily housing.
You don't see it, that's a question.
I mean, they're, here they're gonna de-restrict parcels of land for, was it forty years?
Forty years.
So, whereas you typically don't see that, usually because there's a, there's a value that's gonna be lost there, in my opinion. That's why typically developers will go for, you know, what's the market rate? If I can get market rate, you know, and we've heard that from other developers as well. They get market rate for their apartments, it's the same concept.
How many of the twenty were multifamily before?
Uh, so of the twenty, actually, before there were nineteen, and then there was what we called the lot twenty, that was to be the affordable, that was about four acres, and there were approximately forty units proposed for, for that. So those are gone, out of here, and that lot has now been used to, um, add to the other lots in terms of that, and, and do the cul-de-sacs.
And are you ever right, the traffic, was there ever a traffic study done?
Uh, there has not been a traffic study done, no.
Was that requested?
I don't recall that one was requested on that. We, we have some counts that we can do just from the standardized, um, you know, tra-, I, I'm not, from the Ashtow. Kristen Clark is a, a certain professional traffic engineer, you know, so she has, you know, the manuals or whatever, and they will tell you that a house like this will generate three cars per, in the times and all that. So I, we presume that that can all be in the design report for you.
I'll just note that our own regulations regarding low-volume roads and the private roads, twenty lots is the maximum for a second means of egress and ingress. So, that's where even, there's no engineering standards, it's twenty lots is, that's, you know, so you're gonna generate over twenty, you'll generate more traffic than a low-volume road actually handled. Does that make sense? So, in this particular layout, they have two means of ingress. Egress because they don't, you know, if they wanted to loop the road together, I suppose they could, but, there's ten, ten lots on each road.
There's one way of egress, right? Two, two roads.
Two roads, so you have one way in, one way out, right. But the reason they're able to get away with in this configuration is because they have ten lots on each road. If they put twenty lots on one road, that's where they're gonna need the second means of egress. The only question I had was, uh, that the drainage has been up front there, doesn't continue on lot one? I don't know if it might need to, uh, if they're looking for keeping conformance with the neighborhood setback? That might, I don't know. Um, and then there's parcel of land that's not identified, um, I guess to the east of lots sixteen, seventeen. Eighteen, nineteen.
The strip.
That strip, what is that strip?
I'd have to take a look, but I think that is just a, a offer. I, I'll have to check with the, um, client on that.
J P Green. And looks like there might be a, a well on the lot behind all of this, I'm not sure. That was a carryover.
It is on the land trust, right?
Yeah, yeah. So there might be, maybe a note on that, what it was.
I think, um, and this, this may well be the access to the land trust property because this is around there. Um, I'd have to look at this, I always get the general location of this confused because we did a small subdivision on the very far corner of Holmes Road and Upper Walnut.
But that, that'd be, those are my initial observations, just looking at this.
Anybody else have any comments? I guess we can, you know, if we wanna formulate questions for the next meeting, or just...
Um, well, they, I think their intention was to submit, uh, ahead of the next meeting. So if, if you, I would say if you have any comments or thoughts, concerns, if you can get them to me within like the next week and a half, two weeks max, that way I can get them to them before they make their application. Otherwise, we'll just, if I don't hear from anyone, I'll assume that there's no further questions and that we'll just lean on our, our, our regulations, um, for guidance. I'm not sure, I, you know, I haven't talked to Mr. Mulholland as, in terms of how zoning will look at this in terms of the layout, but I imagine, um, they're gonna, some sort of standardized, like, conforming.
They'll look at it unfavorably.
I'm sure. They, you know, they too have, uh, affordable housing regulations, so maybe Bill will look into that and say, okay, I'll apply this. I'm not a hundred percent certain, but...
I'm not a hundred percent certain, but as we heard, you know, it looks like they can at least provide, what was it, a hundred and twenty feet of frontage? Yeah, so that's, that's a fair amount, let's say the R forty requirement was a one fifty, I think, so you're only, you're thirty feet less than that. Now, that all being said, we under, we do know this area has been upzoned to RU two hundred, right? So, which. They understood, the applicant understood that, you know, potential coming into it, but, you know, they applied early on. So I think in terms of what you heard tonight, as far as the application going forward, you know, were they in ahead of it? I'll let the courts figure out.
Well, the other, the other issue too is that the zone doesn't apply to the affordable housing anyway. So the lot area requirement, which is the one thing we won't meet, we're trying to meet everything else in terms of setbacks, side yard, et cetera. And we think we can do that for pretty much every single lot here. But it's just, I think the atmosphere that I think personally that's been created by the reaction of the zoning commission to upgrading the zone there was to this application originally before it, and the appeal that's pending in the spirit of course. That's just my opinion for what that's worth, that may be a little value.
Yeah, and I, you know, I mean, understanding that's their opinion, I, I don't see how, again, as Mr. Gary said, they can come in and apply for eight thirty G subdivision regardless of the upzoning, so it doesn't really add up to me, you know. So I don't know if that was really intended to.
Yeah, I, I don't either, but, you know.
Tended. So I, I think, you know, there's a lot of test pits shown here, unlike the last plan, there's none shown in, in the road right-ofways, which is good. There's actually, there's sixteen B is in the right-ofway, but again, there's a fifteen-foot utility easement there. So I suspect that they'll put the septic, you know, further back on the lot and won't have any issues with utilities. So I definitely think that's a better, you know, this is a better layout that way. With all those pits, I suspect they'll come up with suitable areas, I don't know, you know, I'm making the assumption that that's the case.
No, I think we're, we, yeah, you know, we've spent considerable time with Ledge Light going through this, that hence the reason for the additional tech, test pits and so forth. So I think once we get the finalized information to them, we're reasonably confident that those lots will be approved as they are.
I think from the firefighting aspect, I think on the previous, the other subdivision, I don't think they put any dry hydrants in, I don't think they did.
Not the one on the corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
I don't know if Bill will have any comments or concerns with that, but again, you know, being so far removed from water sources, maybe it will be, I know, like on Farm Metal Road, there's a sister, so, you know, I don't know. They'll look at it, and the fact that Bill didn't require anything like that on the other subdivision, and now we have, you know, we're gonna have twenty more. So I don't know, I'll be interested to see what his comments are, maybe we can have him look at this.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, the earlier and the more comments we can get, the better.
So I can reach out to him tomorrow, see if he'll take a look at this kind of preliminary concept. Otherwise, I have no other comments at this time.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you. No problem. Thank you. Okay, I guess I can take a motion to the jury.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.